So why don't we go ahead and get started if everybody's ready. They will call the regular meeting of the Temple City City Council to order December first, 2020. Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann.
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Here.
Councilmember Viscara.
Here.
Mayor Protem Yu.
Here.
Mayor Chavez.
Here. Hey, for just a reminder for those who are calling in, your microphone will be unmuted during public comment and when public comment is open during an agendaized item discussion, you can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templecity.us. Do that now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment. So we will begin with our invocation. Very happy this evening to have Jerry Jambeasian, the world-renowned owner of Wonder Cleaners and Draperies, who is, who'll be kind enough to provide our invocation. So Jerry, I heard you had a little bit of a coughing attack there and yes, the
Yeah.
The allergies are going around. I got a little bit of stipple the other day as well, but I'll turn it over to you. Go ahead, Jerry.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's bow in prayer, please. Our gracious heavenly Father, we pray your love and compassion to abound as we walk through this challenging season. We ask for wisdom for those in government who bear the load of making decisions with widespread consequences. We thank you for a cohesive council that truly like each other and want to make decisions that produce the most good for its citizens. We pray for those who are suffering with sickness and all who are caring for them, especially in our nursing homes. We ask for protection for the elderly and vulnerable to not succumb to the risk of the virus. We pray for misinformation to be curbed, that fear may take no hold in the hearts and minds of its people. We remember and thank all first responders, including fire, police, doctors, nurses, anyone on the front line who cares for us. Lord, there is not one of us who has not been affected by COVID-19, from business owners to school children. As the world and Temple City enters its 10th month of this pandemic, we especially remember our hometown family favorites such as Lights On Temple City and the Camellia Festival. As we exercise the good sense that you and your mercy provide, may we also approach each day in faith, hope and peace, trusting in the truth of your goodness towards us. We ask this all in your name and for your glory. Amen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jerry, and you stay safe, my friend.
Thank you.
Okay, we will go ahead and we will go with the pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please stand. Well, no, we don't have our flag up yet, but Peggy, were you gonna put a flag up or should we just go ahead? There you go. Thank you. Okay, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. We will now move on to item number five, our ceremonial matters. There are none this evening. And so then we will move on to public comments. Is anyone, do we have anybody on the line? Let me ask, well, let me ask the city clerk if we have any email requests to speak at this time.
Mayor, there are no email requests to speak.
Okay, and is there anybody online who wishes to make a public comment at this time? Hearing none?
I don't see any, I don't see any callers.
Okay, so I will go ahead and close public comments. We will now move on to item number seven, our consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended, unless we're removed for further discussion. I'll ask our city clerk first if there are any email requests to speak on the consent calendar. Take that as a no. And if there's anyone calling, there's anyone calling in? Madam Clerk, do we have anybody on the line?
Um, I don't have any public callers on the line.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Unless there's any objection, could we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann.
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara. Councilmember Viscara.
I'm unmuted.
Yep.
Mayor Protem Yu. Yes.
Now we can hear you. Yeah.
Mayor Protem Yu.
Yes.
Mayor Chavez.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we will now move on to item eight, public hearing. There is none. And now we will move on to item nine, our unfinished business, the approval and authorization to invite bids for the Primrose Park project. We will have a presentation this evening by our Parks and Recreation Director. Brian, did you want to say something first before we go to Adam?
Speaker, Councilmember Sternquist has something to announce.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Councilmember Sternquist.
Still muted.
You're muted.
I'd like to recuse myself from this item since I have a real interest in, within 500 feet.
Thank you very much. You have a good evening. I don't know if you'll be coming back. This is the only item we have on the agenda, but you're welcome to after we're done with this, so.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, too.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay. Um.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and members of the council. Today, in spite of the horrible news we're hearing about COVID-19, which I'll speak about later, it's a good thing that's coming before you, too, a very positive thing for the community. We've been working with the Standing Committee as well to bring forward to as complete a package as we can, to the point where if authorized tonight, we would be advertising for bids in two days, coming back to you in the first meeting of February for an award bid. We have construction documents already in plan check, ready to go, so once the bid is awarded, assuming tonight's approval, and moving forward, we will be moving very expeditiously through March, April, May, June, July, hopefully, and then hopefully getting this project done. There have been a few changes that, but enhancements we did discuss with the Standing Committee. We have some of those renderings available, so you can see conceptually what those changes look like, but they stay within the spirit and intent of what you have seen and what the community has seen as the overall conceptual design of the park. We think these enhancements will not only improve the durability, the long-term maintenance of the park, but also have some very neat and interesting elements to it, interactive in both, and in the playground in particular, and the concept that's come forward. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Matsumoto, our Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, City Manager Cook. Good evening, Mayor Chavez and members of the City Council. Today's a very special moment for us in our Primrose Park project. We're hitting a milestone moment for the project as we are hopefully going to present for approval and authorization to bid our current design for, for the project. I wanted to give a little bit of background. We started back in January of 2019 with the City Council authorizing the development of the now-existing vacant properties and parking lot on Primrose Avenue. We've come a long way in a, you know, relatively short amount of time. We were able to go through our grant process, get that approved and, and have $2.9 million from the state to fund this project. And we've gone through various design review and now we're at the point to approve the project and, and go out to bid. So I'll go ahead and get started with the presentation. These are the items that we'll be going over this evening. And we'll start off with the project overview. As I mentioned, our total grant amount is $2,972,058. Excuse me, dollars. Right now, our construction cost estimates are at $2.5 million, which includes our 15% contingency. And I also wanted to highlight some of our major amenities, park amenities, which include our playground, exercise equipment, our EV charge stations, which we've added on, restrooms, which we've added on, walking path, public art picnic areas and water features. Again, this is just a highlight of some of the major amenities of the park. About two weeks ago, on November 13th, the Standing Committee did meet with city staff to review some modifications, improvements to the concept design. That includes the replacement of our flagstone and an alternate playground shade structure design. The Standing Committee also reviewed the park design elements as well as the updated project timeline and the project cost estimates. Based on their feedback, we have before you tonight some of those changes that were recommended by the Standing Committee. Just a rough project timeline, so hopefully if everything goes according to the plan and if it's the council's desire, we'll be able to go out to advertise for bid in two days on December 3rd. We're expecting to have bids submitted by January 12th, and then that'll give us some time to review all the qualifying bids and then present to you on the first meeting in February in 2021, a staff report recommending an award of contract. The construction timeline will be roughly seven to eight months and we are anticipating, as long as we don't hit any delays, a grand opening completion of the project by October or November of 2021. So we're looking to have that project completed before the end of the year, next year in 2021. I'll move on to the concept plan modifications. Of the two highlighted areas, one is the flagstone replacement. So we had two areas within the main.
Mr. Matsumoto.
Yes.
Please go back in time like just a little bit. I'm sorry.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I think that one of the things that I think the Standing Committee did discuss at the last meeting was that if the award is in January, then perhaps the city can look at planning a groundbreaking sometime during that month as well. But it, because of COVID situation that maybe now we have to plan a virtual groundbreaking, not sure how to do that. Maybe we'll hold some stand in our backyard, you know, drop it. I, I don't know. But, but that's something that we need to start thinking about, if we were to have any kind of ceremony for that.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that, Mayor Protem Yu. It was something that was discussed at the Standing Committee meeting and it is something that we want to and plan to have. But as we all know, right now with the COVID environment, it's, it's an evolving situation. So as we get closer to that date, that is something that we'll be communicating with the council on, you know, various options. This is a, you know, very, very big project for the city and we don't want to, I guess for lack of better words, get cheated out of an opportunity to, to have a grand, a groundbreaking ceremony and, and hopefully we'll be able to find that balance during, you know, during this pandemic. Since we've stopped at this point, are there any other questions or comments, or can I continue with the presentation?
Go ahead, Adam.
Looks okay. So the two concept plan modifications, as I mentioned before, one of them is a flagstone replacement. This is in the picnic area, which is in the upper right-hand corner of the park, as well as the main entrance into the park from the parking lot. It was recommended by our landscape architect, David Boltz Design, for a few different reasons to replace that material. First is, you know, flagstone is a difficult material to replace if damaged. Basically, each one of those stones is a one-off, unique design, so if one of them were to get damaged, especially in one of our high-traffic areas, it would, it would make it difficult to replace. We do, we did have questions also about the durability of that material in those high-traffic areas. They tend to be difficult to clean if there's food, beverages that are dropped on there, gum, things of that nature, which makes that routine maintenance difficult. DVD did come up with a very decorative concrete alternative, which we'll take a look at later this evening. And, and that'll replace the flagstone as a much more durable material that'll, you know, have much less regular maintenance over the course of the lifetime of the park. The second modification to the concept design was the integration of shade sales into the playground structure. So previously, we had, as part of the concept design, the shade sale as a standalone structure. And one of the items that was brought back by the playground vendor was the use of a more custom look shade sale design that's incorporated into the playground. We really like the aesthetic of incorporating the shade sale into the playground equipment and we think it provides a much more unique and one-off concept for the city. With it being our, you know, really our first park as a city, we wanted to try to make this as special for the community as possible. So again, a little bit later on in the presentation, we'll, we'll be able to take a look at that, that modification for the shade sale. Now we'll take a look at the different design elements. We'll go over the flatwork, shade structures, monuments, signage, and then the landscaping. So this is our flatwork design package. This is pretty straightforward and basic. The light gray areas and dark gray areas are two surfaces, concrete surfaces for the park. Next, we have our rubberized walking path material. You'll see that as a khaki color that, that's around the perimeter of the park. It'll be a combination of those two colors blended together, the beige and the eggshell. Below, you'll see the stone materials that we're utilizing in the landscaped areas as well as some of the public art areas. Those are just the different elements that you'll see there. And this concrete etched decorative stone is the item that I wanted to highlight in terms of the flagstone replacement. So the darker burgundy color you'll see in the upper right-hand corner and then just below that at the main entry, that's the finish that is going to be used in place of that flagstone. Again, it's a much more durable surface, one that lends itself to be able to be cleaned on a more, you know, regular basis and, and, and not pick up the, the foot traffic, the food, the gum, and those types of things that are issues when, when flagstone isn't used. So those are the two different etched concrete surfacing that you'll see within the park. Next, we'll take a look at the shade structures. There's three main elements that we're going to be taking a look at. The first one is a cantilever design. It has a decorative cutout on top and this is going to be surrounding the open lawn area. We'll be utilizing and incorporating some of our city colors, utilizing our, our new city logo with our pink and magenta camellia flowers. The fan shade structure is going to be over our group playground area and this will balance with the white color that, again, is, is pulled and, and utilized within our, our new city logo. And then finally, this is our playground element. So as you can see, the flower design is, is now also incorporated into the playground structure. So instead of having a more off-the-shelf standard standalone shade structure, we're able to incorporate that into the playground as well as some freestanding floral designs for the, for the shade. You know, we really think this enhances the look of the park and we're utilizing a red scheme to follow the color palette. Right now, working with the playground company, they, they don't have a pink color as, as part of their standard powder coating for the, for the metalwork as well as the shade sales. I mean, this is something we're going to take a look at a little bit more to see if that could potentially be an option. But right now, off of what they're made available to us, the red falls in line with our color palette most closely. Our design architect did a slight rendering of potentially what the floral pattern will look like. If you take a look at these shade structures, they're stacked underneath one another and what that does is it creates a more layered look to mimic the layered camellia flower. So instead of it being an off-the-shelf design, it creates a little bit more of a unique custom look for, for Temple City. So these are, this is one of the designs that their, the landscape architect is, I'm sorry, the playground vendor is working with for, for the shade incorporation.
Adam, I have a quick question on the shade. So if you go to the slide before this one that you are on right now, the artist rendering. There's something else on there, right?
Yeah, let me close that. Okay.
So I, I don't know, maybe just the way it was presented here, but some of those flowers, not flowers, but some of those shades look like they're inverted and it potentially hold water and leaves. Is that? But that, is that incorrect? Is that? Because then when you go to the next slide, it looks like it's either pointing down or flat, I guess. See what I'm talking about?
Yes.
You see on the picture where it looks, on the left side, it looks like there's, some of those shades are kind of slanted so they, they could hold things, it looks like almost. I, I am assuming that's not correct.
That's, that is something that the Standing Committee picked up as well and that we were relaying to the playground vendor that it was part of their conceptual design, but that was a direction that we had provided to them that it would, it would not be that inverted, almost cup-shaped design that it would be downward facing for that reason from, so it wouldn't collect either debris, dirt, things of that nature, would make it easier to maintain. So that is something that they will incorporate into that final design, that, that it won't be a, a, a cup-like structure.
Okay, so page 17 is more indicative of what they're going to look like. Are the next page, I guess, yeah? They're going to slope down. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Of course, I have one question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Vince.
Is, Mr. Matsumoto, what remind us, what material is this? Is, is this the fabric? Or metal?
For the playground structure, the, the actual shade part, the inner part of the pedal is a fabric material. So that's, that's the material that they utilize for the playground structure. The other shade areas, the, the shade areas on the group picnic area as well as the open lawn area, those are, those are metal materials that, that are, that are, that have cut through design elements, but on the playground, it is a, a fabric material.
Yeah, I think we, we talked about this, that actually at the Standing Committee meeting that because the fabric, it's potentially translucent. And I don't know if you and the designer have worked on any kind of lighting or discussed lighting. That was one of the things we touched on at the meeting, at the Standing Meeting.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up as well, Mayor Protem Yu. One of the items that is incorporated in its current design is various uplighting. So not only during the day, but in the evening, you'll, you'll have a really, you know, nice lighting aesthetic to the playground as well with uplighting onto these shade elements. So, you know, it'll create almost like a similar effect with a canopy of a tree with uplighting to, to further enhance the aesthetic. Thank you. All right, I think if those are all the questions, I'll, I'll move on to a few more of the design elements. We have carried over our mid-century design look for, for additional elements within the park. This is our entry monument sign. It's a, you know, very mid-century-inspired monument sign for, for our entry point. Again, with our breeze wall, we took to our mid-century design inspiration with the main entry into the park. And you'll see the, the breeze wall as well as the main gated entrance into Primrose Park. And then finally, this is a design package that you had already seen, but we wanted to bring it back just as a refresher. And this is our, our landscaping palette, planting palette for the park. So it'll be utilizing both drop tolerant and native plants to further enhance the aesthetic of the, of the park and, and bring in that, that green component for, for Primrose. So those are all of the design elements I have for review. And then the last item is just our action item. So what we're looking for the council tonight is approval of the Primrose project with the modifications as presented. And then the authorization, authorization to advertise the project for bids. I know we've already had some questions, but now's the time for any of the council members to dive a little bit deeper into it. And I did want to mention that we do have David Boltz Design Project Manager, Mr. Dwayne Tutt, called in in this meeting as well to provide additional information on, on any of the design elements that we presented here tonight. Thank you, Mayor, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Director Matsumoto. Okay, we'll start with council questions first. Councilmember Mann, we'll start with you.
Sure, thank you. So I, I know it's the first time we've seen the, I guess, the color palette for the shade structure. So I ask my question. Is the intent of the design to be monochromatic as in a single color or the design intent to have a variety of colors for the shade structure?
As presented by DVD, it is monochromatic at this point. The reason why is we have a, from the, from the playground vendor, we have a limited color palette and to try to match and, and, and have a similar color scheme with our, our Temple City colors with the light pink and magenta. Red was the closest match for, for what they had existing. It is something that we could explore a little bit further to see if they might be able to do some custom coloring, at least on the metal components, which is powder coated. We may be a little bit more limited in our fabric choices to what is off the shelf for the color, color scheme. If it's desired, we do have what, what's available and maybe if it's the desire of the council to, to take a quick look at that, we can always pull that up as well.
Okay, I, I think it, maybe it just looks in, in, in a isolation by itself. It maybe looks a little, just at first glance, it looks a little monotonous to the eyes. Because if I recall, at, at the Standing Committee meeting, when we saw the, the generic palette, it was a bit more colorful, if I recall, in terms of your, your petals and the outline, they all have like different colors that made it I guess, less. I hate to say the word dull. But I, I think for, for me, it might be helpful if, if, is there a way to kind of show this relative to what the rest of the park would look like instead of just looking at by itself? Because to me, I imagine that the design, you have to kind of look at it ballistic manner. You know, snapshot of this. A structure.
Sure, the, just to answer some of those questions he had, Councilmember Mann. Sure, the, just to answer some of those questions he had, Councilmember Mann. The original design was a more multicolored design, but it was more of a it was more of a generic color palette that didn't coincide or or fit in with our our palette at for Primrose Park. So this one is different from what what you had seen previously. And and the the design purpose was to get a little bit closer to the park's color palette. But again, you know, at at this point, you know, it is something that, you know, we can dive into a little bit further and and and, you know, maybe use more of a neutral, maybe fabric color that creates more contrast that still fits in with the design and and color scheme of the rest of the park. In terms of seeing a overview of all the different components, we don't have that as a as a comprehensive concept where all of these individual elements are put into one overview of the park. So unfortunately, right now, they're just, they're just standalone renderings.
Okay, no, thank you for for explaining that. And I guess just a general question, going going back to your summary of the milestones for, you know, when when we would go out to bid, when we would award, etc. If if an element, if a design element like this is still in discussion, I I'm trying to imagine how someone's going to bid on it if if this could potentially change.
I think it's called a change order.
I I feel like that's what we're trying to avoid, right?
We we're definitely trying to avoid getting to the point where there are change orders. But what we are able to do while still in the bid process is is provide an addendum to the bid package. So instead of instead of not knowing what that cost would be after the fact with the change order, once the bid has been awarded, we'll be able to capture that during the bid process. So we we'll have a clear understanding of what the what the cost is of the park without having to change that after it's been awarded.
Okay, maybe maybe I can, like, let me interrupt here for a minute. I I I I agree with Councilmember Mann. There's there's way too much red here. And I don't, I don't, I'm not sure when or if the design, our logo design became our city colors. I don't recall that ever being stated that it was our city colors on the, in the design, the logo. There it is a design logo that I don't consider red and pink to be our city colors, to be honest with you. I would have hoped that this this design would have included a little bit more colors. It's just, I mean, I mean, we have red tables, we have red slides, we have red tires, we have red awnings. I mean, it's too much, at least in my mind. And, you know, I was trying to think, where have I seen this before? And then just out of kind of happenstance, I was flipping the channels before our meeting and Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory movie was on. And there it was. This, this, this is Willy Wonka Chocolate Factory we're looking at here. Albeit, and at least in Willy Wonka, there were several different colors. I thought it looked pretty good. So I don't know how other council members feel, and of course, everybody will have a chance to speak, but I think if if we can get a consensus now, rather than waiting as as William said, to change orders and everything like that, I think I mean, right now, I think we we have at least two members who who would like to see something different than what we have on the screen right here, so. All right, well, let's move on. Councilmember Viscara, I'm sorry, William, were you done with your questions?
Yeah, I was.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Viscara.
Yeah, I'm, this is really my first go at it, and isn't that something that could have been decided with the standing committee?
Well, from what I've heard, this this is not what was presented to the standing committee. It was something different. I think we're I think we and the standing committee are seeing this for the first time. Am I, am I correct? I I see, I see Mayor Pro Tem nodding his head, so I think it's it's caught kind of everybody kind of off off guard. How do you feel about the colors? Let me ask you that. I mean.
Actually, I don't have a problem with it. I think it would be interesting.
You're okay with all that red, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, any other questions?
How how many charging stations are there and where are they?
So, Councilmember Viscara, the, in total, we'll actually be able to add on four total vehicle charge stations. And I'm pulling up, the last slide probably has the best view of the overall park area, but it's it's not great, but where the S is under questions, the first four spots in that lower section next to the handicap parking will be the vehicle charge stations.
I I had absolutely no interest in that until I bought an electric car this year. And and now I'm very sensitive to it. Try and make it, try and make it from here to Yosemite in an electric car. It's impossible. You can't do it. Okay. I I agree with that change on on the flagstone. I've got some flagstone and, you know, it isn't big stuff like that, but one thing I found with it is that it breaks easily. That's another problem. So that that's good, having yet cemented. But other than that, I I guess that's it for now.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem U?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I tend to, well, we have seen the flower design at the standing committee meeting, but we have not seen the colors. So this is actually this is the first time we've ever seen the colors. And I do agree with both you and Councilmember Mann. It seems a bit much. There's a lot of personally, I don't have, I have less of an issue with the with the red, but more of a pink. Because having what we're focused with the pink colors, some, you know, I I do find certain people have issues with pink colors. But I think we need to kind of put all this in perspective. The designer, while we're looking at each element in isolation and like Councilmember Mann had said, that there are other palettes in here. I'm, I mean, we do have a lot of green palette in landscaping. So the only, the only suggestion I have would be perhaps look at number one, maybe less of that pink. And secondly, in the playground area, as you would see, I think that's page, what page, page sixteen? We actually have a lot of, we have multiple flowers, so maybe some flowers could be pink, some flowers could be red, some flowers could be white as well. If if they really want to mimic camellia. And secondly, we do have the, I guess, the fall zone rubber. I don't know what's presented right here. The red is indeed the color. So perhaps that could be a different variation of color as well. So I I do agree with you that it seems sort of monotonous, so we can play that have some white, some, at least on the vertical elements, some white, some pink. And then the the ground, the fall zone material could be perhaps a darker shade of red or maroon color, perhaps even. I think that would be, that would introduce enough variety there. However, I do actually have a question on the rubberized surface. I think it's page eleven? No, page ten. I don't know if that's the intent of the designer to make it more like the the white color on the city logo. But if it's indeed would come out this light, the beige and the eggshell, I don't know in the long run if the wear and tear would show up, you know, like you know, it's tend to show marks and dirt and dust. So perhaps the designer can take a second look at this color. Maybe we can hear what the designer has to say. I tend to have experience with darker rubberized surfaces. I don't know how 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 well the lighter color would hold up in time. So those are my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Just to follow up on the rubber surfacing that Vince was talking about, is it, is this similar to the walking path at Live Oak Park? Is it the same materials or are they different?
It would be a similar material, the rubberized surface. This is definitely a different color, though. The walking.
Different color.
Yeah, yeah.
I tend to agree with Mayor Pro Tem U. I mean, these seem to be high access areas and the lighter color may tend to certainly show wear and tear and dirt. Certainly, I think that was one of the reasons that we went to a darker color on the track at Live Oak Park is for that very same reason. And so I would tend to agree that perhaps we could look at another type of color here. I don't know where this necessarily matches anything. It certainly doesn't match the colors on the playground. I don't know what the necessary intent was. And, you know, without belaboring a point, perhaps this might be a good time to maybe bring up that maybe these color schemes would be something that we could send back to the standing committee to maybe meet with the designers and staff to, after hearing the discussion tonight, to maybe look at both both color schemes perhaps and maybe come back with another recommendation to council before we get too far into this thing and just so that we're all on the same page. Also, I had a question on the the grant. If I'm looking at it correctly, it appears that the grant exceeds the cost estimate. And if so, what happens to the balance? If there's anything left over?
Right now, we're anticipating utilizing pretty much all of the grant amount. What was listed in today's presentation was strictly the construction costs, which was roughly.
There was a difference of like $400,000. Was that?
Correct. So so the the balance of that comes from the pre-construction cost, so that's our contract with David Volt's Design. That's some of the the planning work that's been going in as well as having TransTech be our architect for the project as well, our our engineer, I'm sorry, for project management costs. So the pre-construction cost will will roughly be about $400,000 combining with that 2.5 million for the construction cost, which gets us to right around 2.9 million. But if there is money left over, it does go back to the state unless it's if if we've completed every single component of the park and have not met that 2.9 dollar amount.
Well, I'm sure we would do our best to use it all up. That would make sense.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Vince, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, actually, that was one of the topics that we discussed at standing committee, so our recommendation is to allow the standing committee to meet with the with staff and the construction team during construction as well to kind of monitor and keep an eye on the overall cost. If there are, it looks like we may have money left, then perhaps we can, we can change the design a little bit in time to fully utilize the grant money.
Right, I agree. And then, given our discussion tonight, maybe some of the changes that we talked about regarding the color palette may have an impact on the cost as well. I don't know. I'm sure it's easier to paint everything one color than it is several colors. I think that's it for now.
Tom?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Fernando.
I had one other thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I was thinking about that rubberized. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you.
You, okay.
Yes.
That 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 light-colored surface you guys were talking about. It's been my experience that that with issues like that, the vendor will will provide another place where that's already been done and it can be looked at to see how it how it held up. But is that something we could do?
That's, yes, Councilmember Viscara, that's probably something we can take a look at to see if over the, you know, the, over a period of years, what the material looks like with the wear and tear. So that's something we could definitely explore with the vendor.
You know what?
I would suggest it.
Okay, thank you. You know, kind of a little follow along with that. It would have been nice to to see what the two combined actually look like, because all we have in our report is is one color and another color, but my understanding is that they're going to be combined. So I don't know if that'd make a difference as far as the it looks like there's going to be more more beige and eggshells. From the one I'm looking at, it looks like the so-called beige is a little darker than than the eggshell, but it might, it might be even, if once you combine the two, it may be even darker than than what we can imagine, but unfortunately, they didn't mix the two together for us. They just gave us gave us one of each, so. Okay, any more questions for staff? If not, we'll open up the public comment. I will ask our city clerk if there are any public comment emails on this matter.
No, Mayor, there are no public comment emails.
And do we have anybody on the line that needs to be unmuted?
No, sir, there are no public callers.
Okay, thank you. So I will close public comments and we'll finish with any final questions from council or any final comments. Why don't we start this time with Mayor Pro Tem U? Any final?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my my only question is, you know, having been on the standing committee, we've been really working hard with staff and we appreciate the effort and the designers' effort to kind of put things together rather quickly. So I noticed the timeline says December third and December third is two days from now. I was wondering, and perhaps the designer being here can answer this question. Some of the questions we have regarding color tonight, is that something that could be sorted out and perhaps issued as addendum to the bid document? Because I, you know, while it's great to be able to work out these colors and come back to the standing committee, I also don't want this to delay the bid too much. So I don't know how many of these color decisions can be delayed without additional costs. So that that's my question, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem U doing, which is saying that, yes, they can work, be worked out after the award and we can, we can put an addendum in the in the bid document as well, letting them know that we're not looking with all, with the custom colors, there may be, there may be additional costs, but we're also looking for cost savings within the budget itself so that we can try to find it, if that's what, if that's what is available. But we can, we can put together in the bid document some type of small addendum with those two note, two notes related to the colors on the playground, so that they're not monochrome across the board and there's some variation. And then we can come back to you as the standing committee too earlier rather than later, even 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 in the midst of the bid process to let you know kind of where things are at and what options are there as well.
Yeah, I mean, something such as provide up to three colors for the flower arrangement and then the city with selected colors during, you know, the supplemental process or something like that.
That's the other, we're thinking, yes, exactly, so that there's flexibility there that doesn't hold up the bid process, but then we can then come back to you and say, hey, by the way, here's what, here's what, the, here's what the, just even like, even when bidding comes back, we don't know. and say, hey, by the way, here's what, here's what the, here's what the, it, just even like, even when bidding comes back, we don't know what the bids are gonna look like monetarily when they come back, but if we have that in the bid document with that as an option, we can evaluate that, come back to the standing me, standing committee very quickly and e- not disrupt the bid, not disrupt the process.
So, that's my question, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmembers.
Hold on, Mr. Murphy, one, one second. Uh, Vince, uh, I just wanted to just confirm with you that when you refer to the flowers, you're actually referring to the flower shade structures, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thanks. Okay, Mr. Murphy, go ahead.
Yes, sir, I was, I was thinking about this as you were talking, one option, and we would have to work this out with TransTech as, as they're running the bid process, but we could issue a bid addendum that actually calls for um a, a an ad, uh, under the public bidding laws, you can have uh optional uh additional elements. And so it's not part of the base bid, you don't get judged on it, but you already know what um, what that price is going to be. And so if the subcommittee uh or the ad hoc committee decides that you would like to use these um custom colors, and so the cost is going to go up, you would get everybody's bid on what the custom color cost would be as opposed to what you said, sir, which is, you know, a variety of colors instead of monochromatic. So we can work with, with TransTech to get that in, obviously, everything will be done seventy-two hours or more, preferably much more before bid opening, so that we don't delay at all, uh, but we can get that done this month.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Viscara, any final comments or questions, staff?
No, I think I've got everything.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Mann?
Yeah, I just want to concur with Mayor Pro Tem U regarding the schedule. Uh, I guess I, I completely forgot about the addendum option till uh Mr. Matsumoto had, had brought that up. Uh, and, and thank you, Mr. Murphy, for, for clarifying that as well. I think it's important, at least for us to know if we do custom colors, what is that additional cost? And you know, we, we talked about that extra buffer or that difference that we have between the current costs and, and grants. Um, I think it's better for us to know that upfront, um, or have that being priced as part of that uh contract, so we're aware of what that is. Uh, and yeah, that's, that's really the main thing for me is, is, is the color, and, and I, I agree, I don't mind um, as part of the standing committee to be a part of the team to work that out, I think. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, you brought up a good point, I mean, we, we've had a, a lot of meetings um leading up to today, and they've all been very productive. Um, I do appreciate E V D as well, and, and all of our staff for really getting a lot of the answers to our questions in a relatively short period of time. I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Is, is there anybody online right now that can speak to the difference in cost between red, blue, yellow, green?
Uh, Mayor Chavez, I can, so there's a standard set of palette of colors that you can choose from, and if it's within that standard set of colors, the price point won't change at all, that's all included as, I guess, the base price. The um potential for the cost increase would be if we're looking at doing a custom color, and um that's what we would have to explore as maybe an add alternate for the bid process in that addendum, is if the desire of the council to go with a custom color, um, what that cost would be um as part of that bid. Um, Mayor Chavez, if you do want to take a quick look, I, I have the original concept, which is a much more multicolored look, as well as just the palette that, that, you know, is the, the base color palette that you can just take a quick look at and see that there are options out there, and, and if that's the desire of the.
Do you, you, do you have that somewhere, you said?
I do, yes, um.
Okay.
Madam, uh, okay, thank you, sitting clear, yes.
Uh, just to kind of, as you showed that, the, from what I get gathered from the discussion tonight, I don't know that where anybody is necessarily saying, let's go with a custom color, but maybe just some more color. You know, just, I'm, I'm sure, so if, if these are all the choices, I mean, I mean, there you go, I mean, that, that, to me, that's, you know, I, I don't know that I would necessarily choose those colors, but I think what Vince was talking about earlier is a little bit of diversity, you know, between the poles and maybe the awnings and in some other areas and, and the, and the ground, I mean, that's like, the, what you have on the screen right now, I think, in my mind, is a good concept about, I think, what we've been kind of leaning towards this evening as far as what we would like to see, and, and so I, I'm not necessarily saying, let's go out and create a new color, but I'm sure there's something in that palette that we can probably uh find that might be useful to us, or.
Sure, absolutely, and, and as long as we're utilizing these base colors, um the, there's quite a few variety of different colors that, that can be, uh, that you can choose from. And um as long as we stay within the, the existing color palette, this is the shade sale colors, then there really isn't an impact for us to not be able to approve the project and go out to bid. Um, it would just be um at that later point when they're ready, when the contractor is ready to to work with the playground vendor of basically selecting the choices that are made at a later time by the um standing committee and the council, um, as long as it's put from this palette, it, it wouldn't impact the cost at all.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with my colleagues, I mean, we don't want to delay it, I mean, uh, we'd like to get it going, and I think there's a uh benefit in that, and I think, given the palette you just showed us, I mean, I'm sure we can come up with something, so it's not gonna be that difficult, so, okay, great, thank you very much for that, and so unless there are any other comments or questions, I will go ahead and entertain a motion at this time.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I would move that um the city council, the city council approves the Primrose Park project, uh authorized the, the city manager to go out to bid, and then uh, and take um tonight's discussion in the consideration of adding uh perhaps more color variety to the playground, and um uh, and add, add, additive ultimate if necessary.
Okay, that's great. We have a motion in a second, thank you, so uh, um, madam, uh, madam clerk, without objection, may we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem U?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes, okay, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Matsumoto, you, staff, and everyone else, uh, Duane, I, I, I didn't see your chats, Duane, but I, I did read them, and so thank you for that information. Uh, you, you basically confirmed what we were talking about, so thank you for that. Uh, great job, I think, by everyone, uh, it looks great, it's exciting to see that it's finally coming together. Uh, one thing I didn't notice, there is a bathroom in there, right, somewhere?
Yes, sir.
I didn't see it, but I'm assuming there is, okay, so, all right.
Bathroom and a good color palette, everybody likes.
All right, we get a, you know, we, we can do that, uh, we can do that a special color, how's that? Okay, so um, no, thanks, everybody, for doing a great job, and uh, I think everyone's looking forward to seeing this uh, this park, I mean, it's a big deal, you're right, Adam, uh, this is the first park in the city and that I can remember, that's for sure, so, v- very good, okay, so.
Quick question.
Yes, Fernando.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
Are, I put in the cart before the horse, but are, are we envisioning having that park open twenty-four seven?
The park does have, is, is uh, has a conditional use per, or has conditions placed on it by the planning commission, so that there will be hours of operation uh, open and closing of that, of that, of that facility.
Okay, I saw the gates, that's what I was wondering.
Yes, sir, that's, yeah, and um similar to other uh public uses, the planning commission does uh, you know, go, we go through the process like any other applicant of the planning commission about hours of operation, so.
But it's been d- d- determined already.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, okay, so we will now move on to item ten, new business, there is none, and we will now receive an update from our city manager, Mr. Cook.
I'll, I'll try, I'll be, I won't be brief, brief tonight, sir, but a couple of things happening. One, thank you to the standing committee for their work and our continuing partnership as we go through this process together, that was, again, what we came out of our last meeting, is we're gonna work together all the way through and get this uh, get this park built, and I'll be, it'll be an exciting moment. I think we just lost the mayor. Did we just lose the mayor? Oh, sorry, that was me. Uh.
No, I'm still here.
All right, that was just me, sorry, my view, um, so.
I don't see him either.
No, that was just my view, sorry about that. Um. With the current COVID nineteen uh upsurge in infections, um, and also to the third tier of the most recent health order issued by the L.A. County Public Health Department, city operations have been adjusted. Um, we're back to very similar operations as we were in March, virtual appointments, one appointments. The sheriff's department is continuing its COVID nineteen detail. Playgrounds as of yesterday were closed, and we heard just this evening that there may be an additional amendment to the health order dealing with um sports clinics and practices. There was a small modification in the last order, but it, because of the most recent surge as of today as well, that may be adjusted as well. Uh, field staff is really prioritizing health and safety work orders at this point, so potholes will be filled, um, a, you know, tree limbs, those types of things, but we're trying to keep them as safe as possible as well from the public as a safer-at-home order, while modified a little bit differently from the March order uh intended and in spirit, we're treating it very similarly. Uh, with park programming, our park programming that we're doing is only that, o- only that park program that we're, requires pickup of materials, our winter classes and whatnot, there will be a pickup time, there will be no interaction of staff or anybody else beyond the normal pickup of materials. Uh, basic life safety services are still intact, I think that's important for the community to know. Uh, if you call nine-one-one, sheriff will come, if you call the sheriff, if you call nine-one-one and you're having a medical emergency, uh, an ambulance will be there with our county fire department. So basic life safety i- is still intact. Um, on, on the front, though, of our city, um, this is maybe some cold comfort at this point in time, but if you take what Temple City as a community, if all eighty-eight cities in L.A. County, we would be in the top twenty-five percent of the least amount of infections per capita. Um, and on top of that, no uh Temple City business has been issued a citation by the L.A. County Health Department. So those two things coupled together, our business community and our residents and, and are doing their job, they're doing, they're doing their part to really try to keep the infection rate low, but unfortunately, the virus knows no borders, it knows no missing, it does not know it's in Arcadia versus Rosemead versus San Gabriel, but at least in terms of what's happening in Temple City, the residents and businesses are doing their part, we just continue to ask them to do that on a go-forward basis. We uh, as a city, are trying to be as flexible as we can, and trying to work with folks uh through this process, and um as we continue to get through the pandemic together. Um, if there's any other, uh, as always, if there's any other modifications and services, I will, I will give you as the council uh notices soon as we, as soon as we know of them, if they are of impact to residents in terms of immediate services, uh, we will obviously let the community know as well, but uh the most recent up, up uptick in COVID nineteen infections um is really kind of taking us back to where we were o- o- several months ago, so our, our hope is that uh the most recent stay-at-home order can get us back to where we're looking at a thousand infections a day rather than seven thousand, where we can feel as though we're comfortable with certain, you know, in-person operations and um, but if anybody calls City Hall or anything else, eight to five Monday to Friday, we're there. Um, virtual services are there for them, um, our lines are, are, my line goes right to my cell phone, so I'm happy to talk and happy to provide any service we can to the community, so. That's it for my report, Mayor Chavez, unless the.
Mr. Cook, if I can add to that?
Yes, but I'm sorry, Mr. Azumi, was it, was it, was there anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, um, in addition to not having any businesses cited, uh, the public health department has not reported any business in Temple City that has three or more cases, there are some in our neighboring community uh businesses that have more than three cases, one uh that is noted, that's in Almani, is the Amazon uh facility is uh showing, I think, twenty-two cases within the facility as of today's report. Uh, and also, it should be noted that um our current surge in cases and today's uh case number over seven thousand does not include what may come from uh any Thanksgiving gatherings, uh, that may be something that may push those numbers a little bit higher as well.
Thank, thank you for pointing those two important things out, especially about our community and, and um the most recent, thank you, Mr. Azumi. That's it for my report, sir.
Okay, thank you for that information, uh, would be nice perhaps if the media would maybe focus sometimes on the things that are happening in good cities rather than all the bad things that are happening in many other cities. Uh, but again, that doesn't sell newspapers, I, so. Um, okay, so let's go to item twelve, update from our city attorney.
No major legal news over the last two weeks, sir, hopefully we'll have a, a good update for you, uh, your second meeting this month.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Uh, item number thirteen, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings, did we have any meetings uh recently? I don't think so. Okay, so we'll move on to item number fourteen, council item separate from the city manager's regular agenda, Councilmember Viscara, anything that you would like to add this evening?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Mann?
Uh, I have nothing to add tonight either, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem U?
Uh, nothing much, just um hope uh if uh everybody would stay safe in this pandemic. Uh, but I also wanted to thank uh the city manager and um uh Mr. Matsumoto, also another designer in uh working with us on the um Primrose Park um project. Uh, it's very exciting to see it, and, and then like the city manager was saying, it's nice to actually have some good news um to see this project moving forward uh in this uh time of the year. That's all, thank you, Mayor.
Tom, you're muted.
Yes, I knew I was muted, my uh grandfather clock was going off, and I didn't want it to uh interrupt our meeting, so I had to, I had to wait for the nine rings to go through, it's a little fast. I uh, I forgot to turn it off before the meeting started, so, sorry about that. Okay, um, I don't really have much, other than, you know, I, I know that many of you have heard of uh um Millie's illness, and we, of course, our prayers are with her to get well soon, and um you know, it's interesting, and, and I want to again thank Jerry for his invocation tonight, but um you know, sometimes we forget in these challenging days of the fact that there are so many others out there that need our prayers, not just those who have suffered from COVID. Um, you know, COVID is at the top of the list, and obviously, we'll be there for a while, but we all know that there are far more many people that die every year from cancer and heart attacks and and everything that seems to be pushed on the back burner, but I believe that we need to remember those people as well and hold them in our prayers. Um, you know, I was talking with the Mr. Cook earlier today, and I mentioned that uh sometimes it's nice to maybe think about the fact that uh, how many millions of people do not have COVID, okay? How many are doing well? And how many are, are, are keeping uh everything going, and we have a lot of, of course, examples of that in our own city. And uh, you know, it's uh, I think we need to be thankful for those people who are following the rules and keeping themselves and others healthy. I think we need to be thankful for those people who are following the rules and keeping themselves and others healthy. So that uh we can try to get through this and maybe not focus so much on the disastrous uh. Numbers that we keep getting every day. I don't know about the rest of you, but I really don't even look at the numbers anymore. It uh, it does, serves really no purpose as far as I can see, other than the fact that it is a fact that. What is happening, and I don't think that's gonna change unless uh. Unless our people in our society change their way of doing things, but uh, you know, we all have our, our reasons and. And I'm not saying one is right or one is wrong, but uh, you know, obviously uh, we need to use um. A lot of common sense to get through a lot of this stuff. Um, that's all I have uh for this evening, so. I will now move on to additional public comments not listed on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any email requests to speak at this time?
No, Mayor.
And do we have anybody on the line who would like to speak, if you don't mind unmuting the microphones? Uh. I see that we have Jerry still on the line. I don't know if he wanted to say anything or not. Go ahead, Jerry.
Uh, no, Mayor. I just uh agree with everything that was said tonight and uh, glad to see that the Primrose Park is going along and. Uh, thank you so much for replacing the flagstone. As a longtime user of flagstone, it is miserable to work with and uh. It does break easy and God help you if you drop some oil or something greasy on it because you'll never get it to clean up, so. Uh, thank you. And the only question that I had, you asked it, and that was. Uh, the funding of the uh grant from the state as to what was gonna happen with the extra money, and uh, that was very well answered by uh. Uh, Director Matsumoto, so, thank you. Uh, it was a pleasure listening to all of you tonight and uh. And uh, we are a good city and we are staying safe, so thank you for all that you do and thank you for public safety. Police and fire who uh, who make that happen, so thank you and have a good evening.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Okay, I will now close public comment, and with that, uh, we are adjourned, and look at that, an hour and twelve minutes, not bad. So everyone out there, uh, stay safe, stay healthy, and uh, we'll see you soon. Take care. Bye-bye.